Good evening, everybody. We're going to get started in just one moment. Ms. Martinez, you can take us out of the practice session on Zoom. So we're going to be streaming live in just a moment. For board members, just as a reminder, all the microphones are turned off. When you're ready to speak, please turn them on or bring them close to your mouth. That helps with acoustic, both for the room as well as for picking up the sound on Zoom for anybody who is participating in the live stream of tonight's meeting. Ms. Martinez, okay, thank you. We have some participants logged on through Zoom. Dr. Mortley, we're ready to begin whenever you want.
All right, let's begin. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 857-4833-0590, and the required password is 052200. Call to order, Mr. Orger.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarski. Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Sacco.
Here.
Ms. Dabner.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Student representative, Mr. Stanford.
Here.
And Dr. Mortley.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on April 19th, 2023 in the administrative offices 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Salute to the flag. Mr. De Silva.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand and face the flag of our nation. Place your right hand on your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. De Silva. Just two minutes, we're deciding to make the one minute session at the end. Okay, so we're going to have executive session at the end of our meeting. So at this time, we'll move to Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group and your position in the group. If you are here alone, please provide us with your name and address. Please specify the resolution that you are referring to in your question. All right, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Gallo. We are open to the public. Good evening.
Robert Ferguson playing through Apparatus. Item K, field trips. Not so much specific to the field trips that are listed here, but in field trips in general. What is the procedure for determining where field trips are on a grade basis? You know, the parents either through the HSO or through themselves individually, depending on what school they go to, are paying for the field trips? Just curious as to what leads to the decision-making of where the kids go? And are there rooms for parents to make suggestions, you know, in the future for other places? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson.
Yes, Dr. Farr and I met with the HSO Executive Board a couple of weeks ago. This was brought up, and what we were able to share with them is, at the K through five level years ago, what it used to be was, depending on what school you went to, there were different field trips for different grades and things like that. What we felt was extremely important is to create a common experience across all the different schools is to allow the principals and teachers to come together and talk about what would be beneficial specific to enhancing their learning in the schools. So they got a chance to look at the curriculum and say, this specific event or this specific location connects with our curricula in some sort of way. So we've been working to identify different places. So when you look at K through five field trips, I'll just start there, K through five field trips, you'll see that each of the field trips has a direct connection with the learning that's taking place. Depending on the grade is specific to the subject that it's connected to, but all of our schools go to, all of our grades, they'll go to the same place depending on the grade they go to. Along the lines of feedback, we're always open to feedback on field trips. We are trying to do our best to find places that are of value, that the students enjoy while still learning at the same time, because that's obviously the number one priority. It's a challenge because, and it's a great challenge to have, especially here in Mawa, is that students go to a lot of different places with their families. So we know that we run up against that challenge of, we pick a certain place and students will say, well, I've been there already. And we don't want that, but unfortunately, that's going to be something that's going to come up. So we're going to continue to look at different places and experiences to make sure, like I said, it's connected to the curriculum and it's of value. But again, I don't want to stifle feedback, but I also don't want to give false hope that if someone provides that feedback, then a change will automatically occur. It will be definitely taken into consideration.
What avenues should they give feedback to? Should they give it to you?
Not me. No, please don't give it. No.
That's what I'm asking. Who should they channel?
No, it would be, the most appropriate way to do that would be to share it with the building principals. The building principals do come together and they'll talk across the different schools. So it won't be solely left there. Those principals will be able to share it across the different schools.
Cool, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Thank you, Dr. Dettori. The additional question was, if you want to provide any suggestions or feedback that you might not have heard it because Mr. Ferguson wasn't at the microphone, so I'm just going to repeat it. It was direct, you know, that by email perhaps to your building principal if you have thoughts or suggestions on field trips. Okay, anybody else? Not seeing anyone else coming forward. Motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Hughes, second by Ms. Sacco. Superintendent's report, Dr. Dettori.
I do have one. I did want to highlight a donation that we just received for our robotics club. So Allen Dale Machinery was extremely generous and was able to give a $2,500 donation to our robotics club. We've been reporting out on all of their experiences and what they're doing with their tasks. The money that they're going to be receiving from Allen Dale Machinery will be going to enhancing their current robot. It is going to provide wheels that rotate, is what I was just told this week, that allows the robot to have more mobility in a 360-degree direction as opposed to the traditional front and back and left or right. So hopefully it'll enhance our scores, which are already, we're proud of. But we're excited that we're able to connect with a local business, and it's going to enhance our robotics club's experience. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Dettori. No, I just wanted to make sure. I wanted to give you your due time. All right, so let's move to our Business Administrator and Board Secretary's report. Mr. Bleeker, I see you've got multiple things on the agenda today.
Yes, there are several, two presentations this evening. One regarding the next presentation on the 2324 budget, as well as an update for the board and a report on the work of the Transportation Committee and an overview of the Transportation Department. First, before we do that, just a couple of, two items from the agenda to highlight. One is that there was one asterisk added that was at the end of the agenda. That's item 17EE. That relates to the ROD grants I had spoken about previously that land associates will be submitting on our behalf to the state of New Jersey. This is to meet a deadline that is coming up soon. So we wanted to put this in as an asterisk. It is similar to another agenda, but it is different in that this is specific language that the state requires that we submit along with our application as the resolution that's on this evening. One other item is an item that will need to be tabled from this meeting to the next. That is the formal resolution for the Shared Services Agreement between us and the township. We had approved that by nature, the last meeting, I believe. But this is the formal agreement that has been negotiated or been negotiated, discussed between us and the township. The township had also tabled it at their meeting on Monday because our respective attorneys are just going through some last finite details of it. In principle, we were all in agreement, but the attorneys are just doing their due diligence with this as well. So we're going to table that from tonight's agenda, this item 17Y, to the next meeting. The last two items of business are related to the agenda before we get into the two presentations. One is an update on the much anticipated replacement of the bleachers over at the high school field. The material for those bleachers was delivered earlier this week, and the workers' response before constructing the site have been very aggressive with getting everything up, all the posts are up, all of the main support beams are up, and some of the seating began to be, was, started to be installed this week. The press box itself, which will sit atop the bleachers, is scheduled for delivery next week, as well as a crane to lift that into place, should be done right now, whether pending, we're looking at either Wednesday or Thursday next week for that portion of it. So very, very glad to see a lot of the work that we, prep work that we've done over the winter is now coming to fruition with seeing the bleachers itself begin to be built. And one final item is, I always like to update the board and committee when we have a couple of items on our GovDeals auction website. We have a few that are active right now. The auction ends next week. We have two of our school buses, which have been retired, as well as a maintenance vehicle, up there for purchase. So if anybody's interested, govdeals.com is where we have those advertised. Okay. So thank you very much again. My first presentation tonight is going to be a presentation number three regarding the budget for next school year, the 2324 budget. This is the third presentation that we're doing. This is the last one of the session highlighting different major areas of the budget. We have one more presentation that's going to be coming up next meeting on May 3rd. At that May 3rd meeting is when we're going to have a summary of some of what was discussed in previous meetings, as well as the formal adoption of the 2324 school year budget. Some of the previous meetings, we spoke about the revenue resources, the tax impact, special education, capital projects. Tonight, we're going to look at benefits, as well as personnel impact and transportation as well. We're going to touch during this presentation, I'm going to touch on some of the financial aspects of the transportation budget. And then in our second presentation, we'll be more just a general overview of the transportation services that the district provides. Okay, for employee benefits, this covers all contractual benefits, health, prescription, dental, so all those medical benefits that we offer our staff, workers' comp and social security. The board is responsible for contributing towards pension payments for employees who are in the PERS pension system. That's included in this account area. And other benefits, contractual benefits that are offered to staff, tuition reimbursement and also payment for acemylate sicton when a staff member retires from the district, all within this benefits category, benefits area of the budget. For next year, the 2324 school year, the budget for all the items listed above represents about 13.6% of the total operating budget for a little bit over $10.5 million. Of that $10.5 million, the large component is the medical benefits component of it. Medical benefits is broken into three different categories, so it's health benefits that's offered. We do participate in the state plan, the school employee health benefits plan for our staff. There was a large increase this past year of 15.6% going from calendar year '22 into calendar year 2023. We do see that as a one-time anomaly due to some decisions that were made in most recent years to provide a premium holiday and to also give back on some accumulated balances that they had accrued. So that is a larger increase than we typically see. There's also some impacts from the COVID pandemic that are also still working their way through, I think, a lot of the medical insurers. So while that was a larger increase in working with our risk management, we do see that as being a one-time, and we're looking for an increase a little bit less than that for next year, for 2024. One contributing factor for this is that this premium is offset by a contribution from the employees. These contributions are, again, regulated by the state, referred to often as either the Chapter 78 or the Chapter 44 contribution. And we've been maintaining a contribution from the employees through the contracts that we have with them. Also offered under medical benefits are prescription benefits. Prescription benefits for members and their dependents. This is a private plan. This is not offered through the state. We contract directly between Mawa, the district and Beddicard. Coincidentally, on tonight's agenda, there's a resolution to renew that for the next school year. Because of the grade experience rating that we have, we've been able to, we are able to renew that at a 0% increase for next year. So we're very happy to see that and very happy to have a positive experience rating for the prescription benefits. Dental benefits is, again, another private arrangement that we have directly between us and Delta Dental. It does not go through any state broker or through the state of New Jersey. This is one of the medical benefits, that there is no contribution from staff. This is 100% funded by the board and by the district. And once again, on tonight's agenda is our renewal for Delta Dental for next year as similar to prescription, had a very positive, very good experience rating. So we're able to do this at a 0% increase for next year. Yes.
So everything that goes through the state, there's a 15.5% increase. For the stuff that we do privately, it's 0%.
That's correct. So for the medical benefits, it is a, of the $10.5 million I mentioned on the slide before, $8,200,000 of that is for the medical benefits or a little bit over 10.5% of the total operating budget. Moving on to the next area of tonight's presentation for this is staffing. So for staffing, this is staffing for us, this is salary, this is, represents all other costs, any cost that an employee might expect to receive through their paycheck. So for next year, 2324, we have a budget of a little bit over $40 million, representing 51.8% of the total operating budget. It supports 506 staff. Those staff are spread amongst three different collective bargaining associations. So we have the Educators Association, which is the largest of the three. Those are our teachers, our administrative assistants, bus drivers, nurses, our custodian maintenance staff that Mawa employs directly. It does not include the staff that we have from Pritchard. That's through third parties, so that's separate. Our Mawa administrators, which are our principals and assistant principals, and of course, our supervisors. And lastly, on the bottom, anybody who does not fit to one of the categories above are employees that hold an independent contract with the district, as well as the power professionals for right now. And other costs, other costs include coaching stipends, extracurricular stipends, funds that we have for any subsequent costs that the district is responsible for. All those are included in that $40 million mentioned in the top bullet. Staffing is, this is a process that we have established in the last several years that has worked extremely well for us. Staffing is thoroughly examined and budgeted to make sure that we're addressing all educational and curricular needs of the district, as well as all of the structural support areas. For the 2324 school year, we are projecting an overall decrease in our staffing, our FTE of 8.5 FTE. These decreases are primarily associated with enrollment adjustments that we have. So as students transition through the schools, transition through the buildings, enrollment can fluctuate and change, so the majority of the positions are before that fact. And it's also inclusive of some additional positions that have previously been created to address needs during the pandemic. The increases that we have included against the 8.5% net of decreases and increases, those increases include an additional guidance counselor, as well as additional assistant principal at Mawa High School. Okay, getting over into transportation. Again, I'm going to discuss some of the financial aspects of transportation here, and then there'll be more discussed in the next presentation. For transportation, just at a very high level, the district provides busing for a little bit over 2,000 eligible in-district students that are eligible for transportation, either based on state statute or on board policy. In addition to these 2,000 students, we also have about 100 students that we transport to schools outside of the township. So those could be to private placements for special ed students or to students, general ed students who might be attending some county, either the Burn County Academies or the county vocational and technical schools. I wanted to put this slide up because for the 2223 year, the year they're recurring in, we did experience a very big additional expense that was incurred in this school year. We've spoken about it a couple of times because of a very low CPI index that the state had issued. And the state provides a CPI index, that's the amount that we can automatically renew our contracts from year over year. It was 1.91% going into the 2223 school year. Many vendors, including the ones, most of the ones that we work with, were not able to renew contracts with us at that rate. So it really forced our hand to go out and rebid many of our routes. By nature of doing that and because of the timing, because it was done right at the end of budget season and bids didn't come in until after, the 2223 school year budget had been adopted, we saw that there was going to be a significant increase in the transportation account lines for this year in order to maintain the level of service that we had been provided. So approximately 33% of additional funds had to be transferred into that account for this school year, for the 2223 school year. We address that through a variety of different ways, mostly seeing areas within our buildings and grounds, custodian and maintenance areas that we could pull funds from and to purchase some at the end of last year. The nice thing was that we did see this while we're still actively in prior year school budgets. So we're able to look at both school years to see where we can transfer money and move money from in order to, once again, maintain our operations for the year. Vendors did have a large increase. Another factor in addition to the low CPI index, vendors saw a very large increase in labor and equipment costs, as well as other costs as a result of the pandemic that just could not be sustained with a 1.91% increase that the state had issued. The other impact for this was we did have, and it wasn't as direct, but we also had a slight uptick in some special ed students that go to have a district. We have right now approximately just under 70 students. We were in the, you know, low 60s about a year ago. So we had an increase of about 7 or 8 students. That also did have an impact on our transportation costs for this year. Looking forward to next year though, 2324. The state did increase their CPI index. Again, it's in excess of what we can raise for our tax levy. It's about 5.8%. 5.86%. However, it is much more manageable than the large increase that we had for this school year. Many of our vendors that we have were able to renew contracts by the end of next year. And for the budget for next year, we have an overall budget of a little bit over $6.5 million, $6.6 million. And it represents about 8.6% of our total general fund budget. That's the last area that I have for tonight's budget presentation. Again, as I had mentioned before, this is the last of the three budget presentations that I'm doing before one final summary and recap that will be done at our next board meeting in conjunction with a resolution by the board to adopt the final budget for the 2324 school year. With that, before we start the next presentation, any questions from the board related to your question? Thank you very much. Just one moment to get the next presentation loaded. Okay, so going right from one to the next. Tonight's transportation presentation that we have is the first time that we've done this in quite some time, certainly at this level. We wanted to take the opportunity, last year, about a year ago in the spring of 2022, the Board of Education established an ad hoc transportation committee. The purpose of that committee, we'll talk a little bit later on, but it was to really take a look at transportation here in the district, look for opportunities to see where we can improve its service, improve what we do, learn more about it as well. Mawa being one of the, being the largest township, the largest community within Burn County, there's a lot of things that we have here in the county that are unique to us and unique to the district that only we see certain other districts in the county don't have or don't experience. To want to put this presentation together, again, this is a fairly high-level presentation, one of hopefully others that will come within the next couple of years or so as the Transportation Committee continues its work. We wanted to start a presentation tonight that speaks about a couple of different significant areas of transportation and, again, be a high-level overview for the board and for the community. And of course, with me, I should have introduced earlier, we have Tracy Spindler, who is our supervisor of transportation. She is going to be doing this transportation along with me. Tracy has really taken on her role, this is the first year in the position, and has really taken on the position and played a pivotal role in gathering the information for tonight and really managing our transportation department since her appointment earlier this year. Okay. I'm doing this one. So functions of the transportation department. So we, it was just earlier, we divided the slides. So for the three different areas that we're going to be speaking about, we broke into three different components. The first component being general education transportation, so transportation to our six schools here in Mawa in district, as well as some of the added district public transportation that we do send. I mentioned earlier, the budget transportation, those are students attending some of the Burn County Academies and vocational techno schools, as well as some non-public school students and what our responsibilities are for transporting those students. We also have a section for special education and preschool transportation and what we do, how we serve those populations. And lastly, some of the other areas that we manage and coordinate transportation for. So athletics, our athletic teams, field trips, and also any other categories that we do as well, which we'll address with that slide.
Thank you, Mr. Bleeker. For those of you who don't know me or who I haven't met previously, my name is Tracy Spindler. I am the supervisor of transportation. I've been in the role since July of 2022. And I just would like to say it's been such an honor to work for the district and it's been really a privilege to be part of the Transportation Committee. And I do look forward to sharing some of the functions of the Transportation Department and some of the work that the Transportation Committee has been doing thus far. So with that said, we do have some of the general education bus routes. We do have 48 to-from routes that service the district, and that's across six schools. They are all round trip, so all in total, it's 96 runs that go every single day all around. So if you see any buses that say Scholastic or Mawa Board of Education, those are most likely our buses. We do have four full-time Mawa drivers that are driving our buses. And then we do contract out. Scholastic is our contracted bus company that we do use. And where possible, the district, in order to service the community in the most efficiently possible, we do tier our bus routes across our schools. So we will sometimes go from the high school to Ramapo Ridge to one of the elementary schools based on our times of arrival, based on the times that the schools do start in the morning and based on the times that the schools dismiss in the afternoon. And that allows us to provide the most efficient service for both our schools and for other schools that we work with. Just some route statistics here. So board policy allows us to offer courtesy busing to all students in our elementary grades. That's K through five, and that is regardless of their distance to and from the schools. So if you live five miles away or you live .1 miles away, your student will be offered a bus ride to school, and that's in K through five. That does change over once the student reaches grade six. So in grade six, we are, we do measure state statute. So that means that if a student is two miles or more away from Ramapo Ridge, they will be eligible for busing. And then in grades nine through 12, that threshold does increase. So if you live two and a half miles or more away from the high school, you will receive busing. There is an exception, though, to this. There is, you know, Mawa is a very unique township. So there are some unique roadways and topography of the town. So there are certain areas of the town where if you live even within the mileage, you will receive busing. And I do have a map that will illustrate a little bit better that, those exceptions. So just to give you, this is not a perfect rendition, but it's just for reference. So just to give you, this is not a perfect rendition, but it's just for reference. This purple shaded area will kind of give you an idea. If you look at the dot in the middle of the map, that is where Ramapo Ridge is. And if you look at the shaded area, any area in that purple shaded map is two miles on or around where Ramapo Ridge is. So if you are outside of that purple shaded area, you will most likely be eligible for busing. Again, this is not a perfect, this is not a perfect picture. If you would like to know specifically, you can call my office and I can give you that more specifically. We do use a routing software when we are looking at a student's address and where their bus route will be and where their bus stop will be and where eligibility stands. But this is just sort of for a reference point. So anywhere outside of that purple shaded area is where busing eligibility begins. And similarly, this is a map of a two point five mile distance from the high school. So any resident outside of the blue shaded area from that middle point is the high school, and that is where you can get an idea of where mileage starts for high school, anywhere outside of the blue shaded area. Not in the border of New York, of course. Just to give you an idea of transportation for any students outside of the Mawa district, because we are a township that offers transportation, we also offer transportation to any students that do not attend Mawa district in district that also attend any Burn County school outside of Mawa. So if you are a student who resides in Mawa, but you attend an academy or a vocational school, a technical school, or a non-public school, such as St. Paul's, Don Bosco, I H A, Burn Catholic, we will provide you with a bus route. And if we cannot provide a bus route for a non-public school, we will provide aid and loo reimbursement. So the first option we will always look for is to provide you with bus route from your home, or from the nearest bus stop, I should say, to your non-public school. But if we cannot do that, we will provide your family with aid and loo. Aid and loo for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year is one thousand and twenty-two dollars per student, and that will stay the same in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. But we are, we coordinate with Region One to provide transportation to our Mawa resident students that are attending Burn County schools and non-public schools outside of our township as well. This map is a rendition of our, of how we are districted for our K through three schools located throughout the township. And if you look at this very colorful map, we drew this in my office to kind of, you know, keep with the theme of what a K through three school map would look like. So it's nicely color-coordinated. We have our yellowish area, which is Lettipie Meadows. A blue area is for Betsy Ross, and the green area is for George Washington. And based on where the child's residence is, is where they would attend one of the three K through three schools. If you look at the top of the map where the lines are through, as I mentioned earlier, since Mawa is such a unique township, there are certain areas where even if you are under the mileage requirements as mandated by the state, if a student in grade K, oh, sorry, not K, six through twelve are living in those areas, they will still be eligible for busing, just based on the topography of Mawa and where they're living. So that is, that's for six through twelve. That just kind of gives you an idea of if you live in those areas, you'll be eligible for busing. So now that I've given you a brief overview of our general education routes, I will refer back to Mr. Bleeker so he can speak to the student eligibility of our student population and...
Great. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Spindler. So to, to put some, some numbers and more data points to the different populations that Ms. Spindler had discussed and spoken about. We have a February enrollment, February twenty, twenty, twenty-three enrollment of a little bit under twenty-seven hundred students, in district students. Again, this is not our students that we transport to out-of-district placements, be it the special ed or, or the county academies, but two thousand six hundred ninety-one coming to the six Mawa schools. Of that two thousand six ninety-one, we have approximately forty-three percent who qualify for busing based on the state mileage requirements. So this is grades K through eight beyond two miles, grades nine through twelve beyond two and a half miles. So approximately forty-three percent qualify for busing based on that state statute. In addition to the state statute, we do offer courtesy busing, as we had mentioned, through board policy. That's for all K-five students who are under the two-mile threshold. For that, we have just under eight hundred students that are within that population. The last group that, again, Ms. Spindler had mentioned is we have a group of students in grades six through twelve that although they are under the mileage of either two miles or two and a half miles, because of where they live, they do qualify for busing. And that represents about four percent of the overall, overall population of two thousand six hundred ninety-one. So all in total for those three bullets, the students who qualify based on state statute, the students who qualify based on board policy to offer courtesy busing, or those that qualify based on, again, board policy, because they're within the mileage at grade six through twelve, we have a little bit over two thousand, two thousand and fifty students who qualify and are eligible for busing. And then lastly, we have twenty-three percent of our population who do not qualify. They do not qualify because they are in grades six and twelve, and they are within that two miles or two and a half miles and do not live in that designated area that we mentioned previously. So that's the, the makeup of who's eligible for busing. After general education students, the next group that we wanted to discuss and talk about were special education students and pre-K students and what their routes look like. So for our special education students and for this population, we're, we're really talking mostly about our self-contained students, those students that do require a certain level of individualized transportation. The transportation they have is often accompanied by a paraprofessional as well and, and identified within the students' IEP. These are often individual stops as close to the home as we can possibly get to assist with their, their specific needs. For out-of-district students, special education students, so this is exclusively done in contract through Region One. These are all students who might attend a special ed school, private school. I've mentioned before about Region One and, and what services they provide to us. I'll mention, speak about it a little more, slide towards the end. But we do coordinate the transportation for the out-of-district students for special education through the region. And through that relationship, we oftentimes can find efficiency with some neighboring districts as well. Preschool routes, we do have five preschool routes. Our preschool program is a half-day program. So we have classes both in the morning as well as separate classes in the afternoon. To support that program, we do have five routes. We have two morning routes. We have three midday routes that's either bringing students from the school home or picking students up to bring them into Lettipie Meadows. And then in the afternoon, we have two routes that bring students home. Primarily, these are done by district staff. We do have one or two that we do outsource through the region. But primarily, we try to do these with our district drivers and district vehicles. The other group area that we wanted to mention that transportation is arranged for is athletics and field trips as well as some other purposes. So for transportation for athletics, we do have approximately twenty sports through the fall, winter, and spring seasons. Within those twenty sports, there's also different levels such as our middle school sports program, varsity, freshman, and JV levels. Oftentimes, we can have efficiencies because two teams will be going to the same away games or away location, I should say, so we can consolidate and have perhaps the JV and varsity teams on the same bus. Sometimes we can make that happen, sometimes we can't, sometimes they're in different locations. But we, we try to create efficiencies wherever we can when we're scheduling those away games. We have extracurricular clubs and activity groups that also arrange transportation through the transportation office. Most recently, our robotics team during spring recess attended a competition in Pennsylvania that we're able to transport to. Our color guard and marching band travels as well to various competitions. And last group there, our life skills program, we also arrange transportation for them during the day. Those are life skill students at the middle school and at the high school. Arrange a transportation for them to have experiences throughout the community. Field trips include going to Maritime Aquarium, Museum of Modern Art, much more local, Seacore Farm, as well as Liberty Science Center. There's just a handful of field trip locations that we have arranged transportation for within the past year. And whenever we can, we try and assign and have our drive, have this done by Mawa drivers. We also, in addition to this event, the contract we have with Scholastic, we have separate contracts held with transportation vendors specifically for the purpose of athletic and field trips. And lastly, area that we transport for is two summer programs that we offer. Summer programs, our booster program is a little bit different setup for this. We provide transportation throughout the entire district, but we have that at seven localized or centralized stops throughout the township. So for any parents who are enrolled, or students who are enrolled in the booster summer program, parents have the ability to drop students off at those seven locations. We'll make a loop throughout the township, pick up the locations, bring them to, to the summer school program, and then reverse going home, leaving the school and stopping at those seven locations for, for drop-off. We also have for summer school, our E S Y program, which, similar to during the school year, is on a more individualized basis. As we mentioned before, we do have four drivers in district. We have vehicles listed here. We have three fifty-four passenger buses that we utilize. We have two twenty-four passengers, seven passenger white van, and we have some smaller twenty passengers as well as a wheelchair accessible bus as well. One, one additional comment here is, once again, per state statute, we do have a certain life expectancy that we must keep our buses to. We are not allowed to maintain a bus for longer than fourteen years after a date of manufacture. So once we have buses that are nearing that age, we put in place a plan to, to replace it if we need to. Again, we also are regularly monitoring the use of our buses with our staff in-house to make sure that it is always operated and, and maintained properly. The State of New Jersey Department of Vehicles does come out to our location here in Mawa twice per year. They do inspect our buses. Certain buses are inspected every six months. In August is usually the first inspection, just before the school year starts, and then a mid-year inspection in February as well to make sure that everything is in good working order. Okay. Getting to the end here. So Region One, we mentioned it a couple of times, and I know I did a more detailed, in-depth review at a previous board meeting, I believe it was the January board meeting. But Region One is a transportation cooperative that is housed here in Mawa. The next slide goes into a little more of the history of it. But the, the, there's a great benefit to having it here. We, a lot of times, can work with them to find efficiencies when we're coordinating routes that go across districts and outside of Mawa. There are fifteen member districts for, within the region. As listed, we have six K through twelve districts, and then several K through eight districts along with their corresponding regional high school that they feed into. Very brief history of the region. The region was initially created in the nineteen seventies as a cooperative to develop not only transportation but also needs for special education services. As special education evolved over the years and districts were able to hire and retain their, their own professionals to service their, their staff, the region also evolved, and it, it transitioned to providing more of the transportation services. And now today, it's almost exclusively transportation services to the fifteen-member districts. Regardless of that, it still is a good forum and a good group where the special education directors, business administrators, and superintendents can get together and discuss common goals and where efficiencies can be achieved through districts that are all within the same geographic area. And lastly, so that's a little bit of, of some high-level specifics about our transportation department here in Mawa. Now, a little bit about the committee that was established a year ago to sort of take on a review of this area of our, of our district and provide any recommendations or approvals to better serve it. One of the first things that we had discussed when we got together and started to work on this was that data was going to be a very important driver of any making an informed decision regarding the, any areas to, to modify or to change. What we did this year in twenty-two, twenty-three, we started in the fall with designating dates where we can collect some of that data and find what the ridership count, what the ridership data is. As we had mentioned before, we have a little, right around two thousand and fifty students assigned. And what we've learned through the collection of that data, we've had eleven data points so far, so eleven dates where we've monitored and, and counted students who either got off the bus in the morning or got on the bus in the afternoon, is of the two thousand and fifty students, we only have roughly thirty-six and a half percent that are currently utilizing that service. So this alone shows that there is some opportunity for some efficiencies or some opportunity to at least learn why this servant, service is being used. What are some of the challenges for some of our community members of using the bus service that we, that we provide and that they're eligible for? In addition to that data point driving some of our decision-making, decision-makings, we also wanted to identify some communication gaps that there might be and strengthen those. We've really been doing a great job this past year of utilizing the one-call system. Whenever a bus we learn is, is running late, making sure that we're being overly communicative to parents to let them know that a bus might be running late or that there's going to be an extenuating circumstance on that day. And also communication to parents that are impacted by the transition years. Those transition years, as we had mentioned previously, are our fifth grade going into sixth grade when courtesy busing is no longer offered. So if you're with, under those two miles, you no longer be eligible. And going from eighth grade to ninth grade, when that threshold changes from two miles to two and a half miles. One of the areas that we had also discussed was sort of looking to see where we can create an app opt-out option for parents. So anybody who said, hey, we, we are eligible for busing, we have it, but we know because of our circumstances within our household, we're not going to use it. We, we don't need it, we will opt out of transportation. That might be another avenue where we can gain some data, gain some information to make some informed decisions going forward. So using this data, we would identify any potential opportunities to consolidate routes. One thing that I want to very much highlight is, is a constant through the committee conversation we have is we are not looking to make any changes or modifications, significant modifications for next year for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. It is going to be another year of maintaining our current operations and our current structure outside of the normal tweaks and adjustments that we do year over year. We do want to very much so take some of the data that we've learned from this year, take additional data that we're going to learn over the coming months and at the start of next school year, and develop a plan for potential recommendations that would be put in place for the following school year, that being the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And with that, that is the end of this presentation. Ms. De Niro, as, as chair of the, the transportation committee, was there anything you wanted to add for, for the board?
Mr. Gallo, if you could just leave the, yeah, when I report, I'm going to...
And, and also for board members, if there's any question from the board that, that we can address.
No, I just want to say thank you. I think the presentation was great. I want to say especially thank you for being receptive to coming up and doing a presentation and talking about some of the work that we're doing. You know, I, I joined the committee last year when it was formed, and then I took it over this year. And I like that we're really using data. I'm a very data-driven person, as is, and we're really doing those data points. You know, we're looking at who's on the bus, who's not, and just always looking for ways to be efficient. I kind of want to reiterate the same point, that there's no changes happening tomorrow or in September. I think that's really important to continue to drive home. And, you know, I'm looking forward to the work that comes ahead now. So as we look at the information that we have, like what makes the most sense for going forward? And also just committing to the community and parents, like that transparency will continue to exist every step of the way as we move. Like there's going to be nothing that's done necessarily in the dark. But I'm looking forward to it. I think it's, this is really great. And, you know, the information was shocking to me when we looked at how many people are actually riding the bus. I was very, very dead set that we were going to look at this and, you know, the number would be very high and, you know, what was causing traffic on Ridge Road, so to speak. So I think I was very surprised and a little humbled when we talked about, you know, thirty-six and a half percent of our student bodies actually riding the bus. So I think that's good information to have, it's not information we had before. So, you know, that's a really good starting point for us, and thank you. I really appreciate the support and the work that we've done together, and I'm looking forward to the next couple of months.
Any other questions from the board for this presentation?
Us, Mr. Gallo?
I just want, I want to echo everything that Trista just said. But I also want to give a shout-out to Brett Copeland. Brett Copeland was really the catalyzing... Brett Copeland was really the catalyzing force behind the creation of this committee. He was, he led the initiative. He whispered and talked and cajoled for a while until we saw the light of day and we realized that this is something we needed to do. And the experience has been eye-opening. Just collecting the data and understanding the capacity utilization that we do have obviously begs some questions, which we'll be examining over the next year. So I just want to give a shout-out to Brett for this. This is sort of the end. Not, it's the midpoint of the work he initiated while he was here, so thank you.
Mr. Gallo?
Yeah, first of all, I apologize. I was unable to attend the last Transportation Committee meeting on State. I have one question. What is the percentage of students who attend either the academy, VOTEC, or non-public high schools who either accept the busing or are reimbursed for their transportation? Do you have that percentage?
If I'm not mistaken, and Ms. Spindler, please correct me. None of the students who attend the county programs receive reimbursement. So they are, they don't receive the AID-LOO that was referenced earlier, a thousand twenty-two dollars. Yeah, it's just non-publics where we can't arrange busing that would be cost-effective for those groups. So the thousand twenty-two dollars that we had referred to earlier as AID-LOO, none of the students who attend the county schools receive that. They all are offered busing through Region One. And again, one of the benefits of that Region One is if we have, you know, students from Mawa going to a county school in Paramus, let's say, or I think Vocational is down in Tidamaro, we can see if there's opportunities in addition to our students here in Mawa, that we can also pick up students from Ramsey that go there, or Allendale along that way. That is a great benefit of working with the region. They can see where those efficiencies can be achieved and bring a cost savings to the district. So we're not absorbing the full cost of that route, we can share it with those other districts as well.
Do you know the number of students that?
Off the top of my head, non-public I do not have, but we have roughly forty students that are attending one of the non-publics, whether it's the academies, vocational, technical, grades nine through twelve. I think approximately forty.
Mr. D'Addaro?
Yeah, just an observation. I think COVID impacted the bus usage for our students, where some students who had left didn't return to the busing. That's, so we probably had a higher usage prior to COVID, although we never took any data at that time.
Oh, I have another question. Are all the buses equipped with seatbelts?
Yes, all buses are equipped with seatbelts. At the very minimum, they all have lap belts. I believe it was about five to six years ago that the state law changed. We're, all buses now, we're required to have three-point. Correct, shoulder belts. So any new buses manufactured after that date, or any new buses that we purchase after that date, will have the most up-to-date, or be up-to-date with most recent standards.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just an additional note on safety. So Kyle had referenced that our bus fleet gets inspected twice a year by the state. Our contracted bus services are also inspected twice a year by the state. So our contractors and our buses are subject to the same state regulations regarding safety?
I just had two questions. One was of the utilization of thirty-six point five percent. Did, were we able to further break down by age group or by school? Because I think a trend generally, I know my students and my children years ago, like kindergarten, you know, like it seemed like it was more elementary as they got older, the, their decision to ride the bus sort of waned a bit when mom could drive them to school. So I just wonder if, you know, out of that, if we've, if we looked at, and even if you don't have it today, I'm just saying that might be a data point to look at over, you know, the.
Yes, we certainly do have that data point. For tonight's conversation, we want to keep it at an average district-wise is what we see, but we do have that data point when we're ready to start making some recommendations and review further. We can't get that granular.
Yeah, we have it by route, school.
Oh, good, good. Excellent.
Though we're referencing the thirty-six and a half, the range of all the schools is pretty close. It's not like we have a route that is sixty percent utilized.
Okay. Twenty-twenty, okay, it's not a big variety. And the other question that always comes up, I see that there's consideration about opting out. Is there a discussion on the committee, and I'm assuming there probably is, about any opt-in for, you know, we do hear about students who would, you know, within those mileages. So I'm assuming that might be something that the committee's talking about too, if that's, you know, feasible or possible for, you know, because it's come up at board meetings about students, you know, who are out of that, who are out of the range or within the range, sorry, but would like to have busing. I don't know if that's something that's ever feasible, but just a question for opting in.
Yeah, that is something that has been brought up a couple times. And again, as we further review the next couple months and into the next school year, and make some recommendations for twenty-four, twenty-five, that is one of the items that has, is on the table.
Okay, do we have anything else? Mr. Bleeker and Ms. Spindler, what a wonderful presentation. Thank you very much. I learned a lot today about transportation in our district, and I've been on this board for six years, so I, you know, a lot of stuff I didn't know. So that's very informative. Thank you very much for your thorough presentation. All right, we move on to our Assistant Superintendent Report, Dr. Fair.
Yes, I do.
We're going to the screen again?
No, we'll end with the screen. I just, so I'll go over a few items and then we'll close with the screen. So before you are a few leave of absence documents. There are three asterisks on tonight's agenda. Eighteen W, eighteen X, and eighteen Y. One is a last-minute leave, N J F L A, leave of absence for employee eight-nine-eight-seven. And the other two are previous leaves of absence that the board has already approved. But due to adjustments and specific medical concerns, those have been adjusted accordingly. The second piece, you'll notice under the personnel, we have the bulk of our summer school program, programs are fully staffed. So we anticipate additional staff on May third with regards to any vacancies that may exist due to an increase in student enrollment. The third is, we're currently in the midst of hiring season. So we are interviewing a lot of candidates. We're excited that our first two appointments or recommendations for appointments are two teachers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Those are on this evening's agenda. We believe that we will have most of our other positions recommended to you for appointment at our May third agenda. Also, as referenced in this evening's budget presentation, you'll see Agenda Items eighteen Z and eighteen A A, our recommendations to the Board of Ed for creation of positions. So eighteen Z speaks to an additional K-three school counselor to provide supports to our elementary program. And Agenda Item eighteen A A speaks to the transition to and creation of an assistant principal position, transitioning from the current dean of students role into a second assistant principal role at Mawa High School to assist with all responsibilities in building operations, inclusive of anything related to instruction, which is a distinction that this new job title can contribute to overarching building leadership. And with that said, we have two retirements on this evening's agenda. Eighteen B, we have listed Mr. Robert McFerrin, who we reference as Mickey. So twenty-nine years ago, Mr. McFerrin started his work at Mawa High School as our dean of students and now serves as our school security officer. In his role, Mickey has led the investigations and the resolutions of disputes in the building. He was also our golf coach for fifteen years, an avid supporter of our ice hockey team, and initiated the honor guard for parades. Mickey's knowledge of the Mawa community, his sense of humor and his ability to build relationships with students have helped him to resolve conflicts between students throughout the years. His knowledge of stress management has helped him to understand and help students in distress as well. We wish Mickey happiness in his retirement. And our second retirement to announce is Ms. Liz DeJean, Agenda Item eighteen A. She's currently our teacher of reading at Ramapo Ridge Middle School. Liz has been a resident of Mawa for thirty-six years and has taught in Mawa for thirty-one. Ms. DeJean has taught first grade at the former Commodore Perry School, fourth and fifth grades at Joyce Kilmer School, sixth and seventh grade, language arts at Ramapo Ridge Middle School, and announces her retirement as a sixth-grade reading teacher at the middle school as well. She's a building representative and has also served as a member of the M E A leadership team. Liz attends many community functions, including Mawa Day, the MSF Gala, and the MSF Run. In fact, Liz has come in first place in her age group for the run, even though she often shares that she believes no one else in her age group runs, and that's why she gains first place. Liz's plans for retirement include having some quality time with her mom, visiting her son JT at the University of Rhode Island, and spending time with her family and friends, while also hopefully traveling to Italy. So we wish her all the best in her retirement as well. Lastly, what we've been trying to do the last few board meetings, or the last few months of board meetings, is spotlight some of the great things that are happening in our district and really highlighting our school specifically. So you'll see here is a tweet from Betsy Ross School showcasing the school's playground update. So there was a student at Betsy Ross who was not able to fully access the school's playground area. In order to provide the student with increased access to be closer to her friends in the playground area, although we had mats in place, Access Matt assisted in providing more access for a student. So there is a Betsy Ross School parent, Mr. Reagan, whose company makes accessibility mats for beaches, playgrounds, and other areas. He and his company donated these mats to Betsy Ross School so that all could gain full access to the playground area. This tweet showcases Access Rec, who visited Betsy Ross School's playground with a film crew to document these mats and their impact on the school community. So this social media post showcases the work. We have our student excited, the film crew hard at work. And then in our own Googling, we had, we found Access Rec's Facebook page that also made mention of this work as well. So we're very excited to highlight all of their work, all of the great things happening in our district. And that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lights, please. Thank you, Mr. Gallo. All right, my report. So we, I want to highlight this award. It was presented to us at Instruction Curriculum by Mr. Pascal. But I really want to just take a moment. So this is the I T E E A, which stands for International Technology and Engineering Educators Association. We were, and I think Dr. Dettoro talked about this, we were recognized as a STEM School of Excellence for twenty-twenty-three. There were eighteen schools recognized across the country, and Mawa was one of them. And the award was received in Minnesota at their annual conference last week by Mr. Pascal, Kim Loesch, and Andrew Ko. What I wanted to highlight is that, you know, it was a rigorous application procedure and so on, and to be selected internationally is pretty tremendous. Oh, excellent. As I speak, we have visuals, because Mr. Pascal did leave for us the banner, which is going to be displayed at our T-three building. And. I mean, it's so cool.
Is he happy with the pixelation here?
Yeah, he was like, we do a much better job. Mr. Pascal was like, we do a much better job of branding than their branding. But what I wanted to highlight is some of the examples of what's going on at the high school that demonstrated our excellence, worthy of acknowledgement of this sort of award. And this was, I think, Dr., Mr. Pascal said something out today about this, but is like the district's career pathways program, our community service outreach for the Mawa Town Council, T-three innovations and inventions, the course that requires students to create orthographic diagrams, three-D CAD software, three-D printers, in order to design, build, and assemble a competitive dragster vehicle. Also, our visual and performing arts and integrated design festival, highlighting student-created art, woodworking, digital media, Caliopi Literary Magazine, and the students who perform live music. The guidance department's integration of career and college fairs. And also our very own Dr. Fair and Dr. Bavino, along with Ruth Davis, who was our supervisor of technology integration, who presented at our Tech Expo conference. So again, a lot of things contributed to this award. I just wanted to say again, Mawa's on the map of technology, and it's truly, truly amazing. So again, a round of applause for our, you know, people who put this award in and the fact that we've been so recognized. We really wanted to take the time for that. Thank you. Next, I just wanted to talk about Mawa, the MSF Casino Night. Many of us were in attendance last week. It was a great evening, wonderful to see such a great turnout of over three hundred people. And, you know, as we know, it's been a couple of years, so it was great to have everyone back in the same room. There was good food, plenty of baskets, and silent auction items. Again, thanks as always to the Mawa Schools Foundation for their continued support of our schools and students going on for now over twenty-plus years. In middle school sports, we had track and field at Ramapo Ridge, had their first meet last week. Oh, yesterday? At the high school. Meet at the high school for our middle school students. Excellent. J K's having Author Day on April twenty-fifth. It's Gail Galligan. Her new book is Freestyle, but she's also written books in the Babysitters Club series, which seems very exciting, and I'm sure J K is very excited about that. Lastly, a few quotes for spring. Spring's greatest joy beyond a doubt is when it brings the children out. So it's good to see all the kids out, and spring is when life's alive in everything. So enjoy spring. All right, Board Committee Reports. What do I have? Maybe we want to have, Mr. Stanford, would you like to go first? Because you have waited patiently, and you may have some things to get to. So if you wouldn't mind, we'll have our student representative, Ryan Stanford, speak first. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just have a few events upcoming and recent to report upon from the high school. Student government is starting to plan our Spring Spirit Week, which is going to be similar to our Fall Spirit Week. We're going to have some fun daily theme days of dressing up and stuff. And the voting forms were sent out this week. So all the themes are going to be decided upon by like a vote from the student body. The senior newsletter was sent out this week as well, detailing all the upcoming senior events for the end of the year, some of which are fifty days until graduation celebration, which is also a decision day on May first, where all the students wear attire of their college that they chose or their technological school that they chose, and we all sign a big banner, and it's a great time. SGA provides cookies and some other snacks. Senior movie night is also in the works. We have suggestions from students, and those are going to be going into voting this week to land on a winner that we watch. It's going to be in late May, and there's going to be more events to be discussed in later meetings as they get closer. Take Your Child to Work Day is on Thursday, the twenty-seventh. The Hope Club at the high school is going to be organizing this for activities to entertain the kids throughout the school day. A P exams are approaching fast. They start on May first, so all of our A P classes are working hard to prepare for those. April twenty-first, this Friday, is going to be Family Friends Indoor Winter Garden Night and indoor winter percussion. They're getting a show available to all family and friends interested, and it's going to be in the high school gym at seven o'clock. be in the high school gym at seven o'clock. The Winter Guard is competing in the main championships this Saturday in Tom's River. And finally, the music program had a great, successful trip to Boston this past weekend. Each group performed and were critiqued on their performances. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other Board Committee reports? Ms. Daveniera?
Just a quick community corner for everybody. This Saturday, the Class of Twenty-three Gala Committee is holding a clothing drive at the high school from ten to two. They're taking donations of clothing, accessories, et cetera, et cetera. Earth Day is being celebrated at Town Hall this weekend, on Saturday as well. They're collecting shredding from nine to one. They're doing a tree sampling and mulch giveaway from nine to twelve, and there will be a styrofoam collection from nine to twelve as well. I wanted to give a very special shout-out to Jenna Vitres, who graduated from Maua High School in 2003. She had her first children's book published this week, which is very, very exciting, called The Loud Librarian. Mrs. Sekone has her copy. My copy is not here yet. I went to high school with Jenna, and it's very, very exciting when you see people that you essentially grew up with do really, really cool things. So I was very excited to see that her book was published, and it's available on Amazon and through all sorts of other booksellers. And I would definitely take the time to check it out, because it's very cute.
And I would just like to add, it is being published by Simon &amp; Schuster, which is amazing considering how competitive the field is. So that's quite an honor. I read the book. It's absolutely adorable, a really cute book. I'm giving it to my grandchildren.
Just two more quick updates for me. Fall sports registrations are open on tmysb.com. I know that it seems early and odd that we're doing fall registration in April, but it takes a lot of planning, especially over the summer. If you are registering for cheer, the deadline is June second, and I am standing strong this year and not taking any late registrations. So please register as soon as you can. Those numbers are really important. I just want to highlight Mrs. Gazinski in the Habitat for Humanity Club. She's doing a partnership special with TMYSB this spring. She is doing what is called a training program, the Miles per Marcus Run that is happening in May. So she's taking her Habitat for Humanity volunteers, and she's partnering with the fifth and sixth graders who are part of her homework club, or fourth and fifth graders who are part of her homework club at Joyce Kilmer. They meet every Sunday. They're doing practice training at Continental, so they're doing lots, but they're also talking a lot about leadership and, you know, volunteer work and kind of the important parts of being good members of society, and just talking a lot about who Marcus was and what his legacy stands for. I am so happy that we were able to partner with her to do this program. That leads me into the Second Annual Miles per Marcus Run, happening May twentieth from ten to twelve at Continental. It is the biggest fundraiser that they do for the Marcus Cial scholarship that's offered at the high school, and then also the Legacy for Life program that they're doing, doing cardiac screenings at the high school. And directly following the run is the MHS Alumni Soccer Game, happening at one PM at Continental as well. That's it for today.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gallo?
Hi.
Mr. Gallo?
Just two items. I want to thank Kyle and his staff for the budget presentations that we observed the last three meetings. Next meeting, we will be voting on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So if you have any lingering questions, this is your time to get your questions in, and also the public, obviously, to better understand where their resources are being spent. The other committee I'm involved with is negotiations, and we met again recently with the MEA, and we continue to have a constructive dialogue with our MEA partners, and we look forward to hopefully having a settlement in not the too distant future.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Anything on policy, Mr. Denise?
No first reading.
Okay. A first reading. All right. So I have a quick report on instruction and curriculum. We had our meeting on the seventeenth. This is our April meeting. We didn't have a March meeting, so this is from our April meeting. We did have discussion of a new book that's going to be added in the seventh-grade World Geography class for the door of, it's called The Door of No Return. It's a supplemental reading for seventh-grade students. We had also introduction, we actually met our new Supervisor of Technology, K through twelve, Robert, who goes by Bobby Kalman, and he introduced to us that they're, they've introduced the Chrome OS Flex program to address some login delays for multiple users, and this is for K through three, and it's been outfitted in all the media centers. So it just makes it much quicker for kids to log in, and seemed like, you know, good stuff. Internship and externship. Mr. Pascal came and just spoke to us about the fact that this summer, we have about forty juniors who are interested, even a few sophomores who are interested, but mostly juniors is the focus in internship and externship programs. And this would be generally through like July fifth through August fourth. So many of these are partnerships through our Thunderbird Partnership that's been started, and tremendous work in, you know, getting our students, you know, real-life and career-ready experiences. And this is for, you know, the opportunity to go try something if they have an interest. So tremendous program. Summer school programs. Dr. Bavino gave us an update that the website has launched, and the invites for the Summer Booster Enrichment Program have been sent out, and the ESY Special Ed Program will be invited through their child study teams. Dr. Bavino also spoke with us about PSYOP training, which is referred to as Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol Training. Say that very fast several times. This is basically a teacher training program, and it's designed to support our English Language Learner students in their general ed classrooms. So it's a good opportunity. I think twenty-nine teachers are being trained, and it's a good opportunity to be able to do it within their own classroom. Lastly, we have curriculum writing, some approvals for that. Two of them were approved at our last board meeting for Chinese Mandarin, which is a new class, and freshman advisory for some updates. And tonight, I think we have Fundamentals of Investing, which is a new business course, Marketing, a new business course, and Updates to our Art History AP Course on tonight's agenda. So that's it for that. Maua Schools Foundation, I just wanted to give a quick blurb that they, some items from the silent auction from, I guess, from Casino Night, there were not bids, so they will reopen on Friday, April twenty-first, and close on Friday, April twenty-eighth on their website. So check those out if you weren't there that evening. They're also doing a fifty-fifty raffle, which will be sent out, and ticket sales will open on May first, and I think they're drawing that on the last day of school, I think. And then also, they're going to be doing a meet and greet in May, so if you're interested in learning about the Maua Schools Foundation, then please look at their website for that, and you can certainly join them and get more information. All right, that's all we have. Board Member remarks.
One of the, or a couple of things that I saw that did not get bid on
Oh, sure. Okay. At the auction, yeah.
Which I was absolutely floored were additional tickets to high school and Ramapo Ridge graduation promotion.
Oh, the seating?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, the reserved.
Well, there were two, there were two things for reserved seating,
Okay, right.
which are additional tickets, and then another one, just additional tickets, which people, I mean, I can't believe that those were not bid on, so I'm hoping that those are some of the things that they're going to reopen up, and if people know about that, I'm sure that'll, you know, that'll solicit some.
So additional tickets, Mr. DeSilva is saying, for graduation and for eighth-grade graduation, or for both?
Eighth-grade promotion and high school graduation. One of the things as a board member, we get asked a lot, how can I get extra tickets? Well, here you go.
Go to the website. April twenty-first, opening Friday. All right, excellent. Board Committee, any remarks? Any additional comments? Okay. Oh, Mr. Gallo.
Three quick things.
So three.
One is, I just want to amplify the internship/externship program that Mr. Pascal spoke to us in the curriculum committee the other day. So last year, you may have remembered, there were three students who came to a board meeting to present their experience, and now John is talking about having forty students involved in this program. So we're going from three kids, three students, to forty students, who are going to have real-world experiences. It's been a long time coming. There's been a lot of foundational work laid to get this program off the ground, and I think we're just starting to see the snowball get a little bit bigger as it rolls down the hill, and it's going to be very, very exciting for these students and for the district to have these opportunities for our students. And it's a real achievement of John's and all the staff that went to support the program. There's some PSYOP work that's going to be done to support it, because the, just the administration of it will become more, become more complex and more voluminous, but I think it's a wise investment for the district to continue that support. Two other items was Liz DeJean and Mr. McFerrin's retirement. I think that escaped really nice summaries for both of them. Mr. McFerrin has become a FishRye regular, so in his retirement, I would hope to continue to see him at FishRye and in the neighborhood, he's a couple blocks away from me. And Liz DeJean, I hope she has, I spoke to her a little bit about how her time in retiring and approach on her mom, and I hope that really goes well for her, and I wish, I wish both of them the best of, best of health and best of happiness, and thankful for the many, many decades of service to our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Yes, congratulations to both Mr. McFerrin and Ms. DeJean. Actually, my son was, played golf four years at Maua High School, and Mr. McFerrin was one of his coaches, and he also had Ms. DeJean. So people who've given a lot of time and effort to our district, we do greatly appreciate it and wish them well in their retirement. All right, shall we move on to old business? Should we take minutes? Mr. Bleeker? Oh, I need a motion. Yes, I just lost that. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Hughes. All right, this is for the March twenty-ninth Public Work Session. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Sekone.
Yes.
Ms. Daveniera.
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Abstain. All right, let's take new business other now. Mr. Bleeker, should I do A to EE book tabling seventeen Y, is that correct?
That'd be fine.
Okay. So let's, I need a motion on the floor for A to EE, Mr. Denise with tabling seventeen Y, and second by Dr. Park. Any questions? Discussion? Okay, let's take roll call, Mr. Bleeker.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Sekone.
Yes.
Ms. Daveniera.
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes, and I look forward to seeing seventeen Y on the next agenda.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, except on a seventeen A, I will be abstaining from check number one-one-zero-nine-three-three.
Thank you. And Dr. Morthe.
Yes, and I think perhaps it's only appropriate that we wait for Mr. Kismarski to vote on seventeen Y, perhaps.
You're going to have to abstain.
Yeah, well, still. Anyway, yo, that is true. All right, new, let's take new business personnel. Let's do our two retirements separate, A and B. So I need a motion for eighteen A and B. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Hughes. Mr. Bleeker?
So before we vote, just.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to throw out there, you know, between those two people, Ms. DeJean and Mr. McFerrin, I mean, my goodness, we're looking at sixty years of experience, that, you know, that, I mean, what a blessing it is to be able to, young enough to retire, to, you know, to enjoy your retirement. You know, Ms. DeJean, I mean, such a special teacher and just an extraordinary person, and obviously will, will be greatly missed. Mr. McFerrin, I met when I was in elementary school. He was my hockey coach of the sport panorama. Hey, a lot of people don't realize, you know, before he started working at the school, he was a police officer in Maua as well. He's very involved in things like Boys State, Girls State outside of here. So you want to talk about two people that dedicated a huge chunk of their lives to the kids in Maua. I mean, the, you know, the time and dedication is really extraordinary, and, you know, our, our community is, is really better for having had the two of them participate in, you know, the level that they have. And, I mean, I'm thankful for both of them. I wish them a long, happy, healthy retirement, you know, with all the things that they deserve.
All right. Yes, thank you, Mr. DeSilva. Well said. Anybody else? All right, let's vote. Roll call, Mr. Bleeker.
Okay, once again, this is ready. Items eighteen A and B, the two retirements, we had a motion by Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Hughes. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Sekone.
Yes, and I work with Mrs. DeJean, so I'd like to congratulate her as well and Mr. McFerrin.
Ms. Daveniera.
Yes, and congratulations to both. And I'm still in a little bit of disbelief that Mr. McFerrin is retiring. He survived the first three Daveniera kids who went through Maua School, and I really thought he was still going to be there for the next two. And just, you know, my fondest memories at Maua High School were spent on the little bench outside of Mr. McFerrin's office. And I just, it's so crazy, but just, you know, congratulations to both. And yes.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, and I have another old Mr. McFerrin story. So I was chaperoning the music trip to Boston one year, and I had to get my keys, because I had to park in the parking lot, and I remember being called into his little office there, and it was really intimidating.
Yes.
But I knew that my keys were protected like the launch engines of our National Missing Defense System. And, you know, he always has that sense of humor. He always has his quips, and that little room can be intimidating, so I put weekend vision very well. Yes.
And lastly, Dr. Morthe.
Yes. All right, now let's take eighteen C through BB. I need a motion. Mr. DeSilva, second by Ms. Sekone. Mr. Bleeker.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Sekone.
Yes.
Ms. Daveniera.
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes, and thank you to our Winter Guard volunteers in BB.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe.
Yes. All right, public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Bylaw oh-one-six-seven. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. All right, I need a motion to open to the public. Mr. DeSilva, second by Mr. Denise. All right, we are open to the public. Seeing no one coming forward, we are closing to the public. I need a motion to close to the public, Mr. Gallo and Ms. Sekone. All right, we are closed to the public. We are going to recess to executive session, and we will adjourn from there. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. Have a good one. Yeah, oh, sorry, motion to go and to close. Thank you, Mr. DeSilva to executive session and Mr. Gallo. Thank you.